Call this me to order, city of Groves, notice of a special meeting of the city council. City council chambers, Groves city hall, February twenty first, twenty twenty three at five P M. You'd all rise for the prayer and pledge, please. Dear heavenly father, we ask for your guidance in tonight's meeting. Help us to distinguish what would be best for our city moving forward. We'd like you to bless all of our citizens, our employees, and all of our first responders in this city. And be with us as we, as we go through this, this process. And bless us with your knowledge. In your name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, city clerk.
Mayor Born.
Here.
Mayor Protim McAdams.
Here.
Councilmember Dugus.
Here.
Councilmember Oliver.
Here.
Councilmember Vinsel.
Here.
Thank you very much. I'd like to welcome everybody to tonight's meeting. Item four will be approve the minutes of the February eighth, twenty twenty three city, or special meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the February eighth, twenty twenty three special meeting.
A second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the February eighth, twenty twenty three special meeting. Do I have any questions? No questions, vote on the motion. Mayor votes aye. Mayor Protim McAdams.
Aye.
Councilmember Vinsel.
Aye.
Councilmember Oliver.
Aye.
Councilmember Dugus.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item five will be approve the minutes of the February thirteenth, twenty twenty three joint public hearing regarding game rooms and gaming machines.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the February thirteenth, twenty twenty three joint public hearing regarding game rooms and gaming machines.
A second. Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the February thirteenth, twenty twenty three joint public hearing regarding game rooms and gaming machines. Do I have any questions? No questions, we'll vote on the motion. Mayor votes aye. Mayor Protim McAdams.
Aye.
Councilmember Vinsel.
Aye.
Councilmember Oliver.
Aye.
Councilmember Dugus.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item six, approve the minutes of the February thirteenth, twenty twenty three joint public hearing regarding food trucks.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the February thirteenth, twenty twenty three joint public hearing regarding food trucks.
Second. Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the February thirteenth, twenty twenty three joint public hearing regarding food trucks. Do I have any questions? No questions, we'll vote on the motion. Mayor votes aye. Mayor Protim McAdams.
Aye.
Councilmember Vinsel.
Aye.
Councilmember Oliver.
Aye.
Councilmember Dugus.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item seven will be reports.
Uh, mayor council, uh, Friday, some things that were on Facebook. I had a phone call from Mr. McAdams about the plan that the city has for these. And it, it is a plan that we've had for a while now. But, um, I've asked Michael Tentrip to be here to kind of update everybody on that plan. Kind of inform everybody of what's actually going on in, in our world, not the Facebook world, to kind of be on the better side of it. Um, just to inform you folks about what we're really doing.
All right, uh, well, thanks for letting me talk to y'all about what's really going on. Uh, first, I kind of want to give you all an overview of what, what meter reading is, what we do, what's the problem, and what we're going to fix it. So, first of all, um, the meter reading responsibilities was moved to utilities in November. So I've had it for four months, I guess. Um, that was part of the process of improving all this. Um, it, it allowed us to decrease the dedicated meter readers from two to one. Um, I'm able to use my crews now to assist with all this because a lot of projects that we would be working on were delayed because you're gonna hear a lot in here, and I'm sure you hear about it all the time, the supply chain issues. Can't get parts, so can't do certain things. Um, so it allows, uh, they can help doing the manual reading, which I'm gonna talk to you about now. Uh, first, I brought visual aids, uh, so.
Troy can be your model. Troy can be your model.
Yeah. So, okay, a meter really consists of multiple parts. Um, this is what's in the ground. And most of the older meters that have, that have been in service for a while, and these are the ones that we're replacing. Uh, this is the base. This is what the water flows through. It has a disc on the inside that spins when water goes through it. There's a magnet inside there. And inside that magnet, it turns this. This is the register. Okay? The register turns. There's no battery that has need to be changed, which is a common thing you see on this Facebook joke. Uh, there, there's none of that. It just turns. It skiers. That's all it is, is turning. Um, this wire connects to this, and this is called an encoder. With this encoder, it takes the information that's a manual reading with the dial and odometer, like on your car, like the older cars where it was actual, you know, numbers, not the digital ones. Um, it encodes it into a radio signal. Antenna ties on to this, and that would be on top of the box. What this does is every, I think it's fourteen seconds, it sends out a signal. So when we do meter reading once a month and drive by, it picks up that signal. So every fourteen seconds, it's going off. It has a battery in it. The battery lasts, the lifespan between fifteen and twenty years. Why they don't make cellphone batteries, I don't know, because that would be amazing. Uh, but the batteries are not double A batteries. You can't just go change the batteries. That's another common thing. Why haven't we changed the batteries? They're not a double A battery. They last fifteen, twenty years. Uh, it's completely sealed. And I'll, I'll pass around if y'all want to look at it. Um, it's completely sealed. It kind of looks like a, a D sized battery, but it's lithium. Um, it's sealed, and it has another smaller battery in here as well. The wiring connects into it. That's what powers every fourteen seconds it sends out a low, low wattage radio signal out. That's what's going on. Um, we have three zones that we read and split up. So basically, the city's set up into like a third, a third, a third. So three times a month, we get a laptop, and it has a, a big contraption about this big, and antenna goes on top of the truck, and he drives that route. And it picks up those signals. They're burping out every fourteen seconds, it's picking it up. It records all that. And we take that data and, uh, put it on a U S B drive, bring it to water billing. They load it into the system. And then from there, it'll say, okay, all these it read, and then here's the list of the ones that did not read. Because it's looking for all of these. It's looking for them all. If the battery's dead, it's not sending the signal out anymore. So we get a printout. Uh, depending on the zone, there could be about nine hundred of them that aren't reading. We have, uh, I think it's two thousand three hundred and fifty-nine as of like today that are currently not transmitting. So what we have to do is we have to send people out there and actually physically go pop this, uh, pop the lid open, look at it, and get the number, like in the old days, before the radios. They are still reading. I know that's another misconception, that the batteries are dead, so it's not reading. It is still reading. We just have to go look at it and get the number off of it, write it down. We turn it in. Now, uh, so we call, we call that check reads, what we do. Um, used to, when it was a, uh, this is a completely manual thing, no computers or anything. There were two meter readers, and they read, uh, every other month. So it was a bi-monthly deal. If you've lived in Groves for a good while, you might remember you only got a water bill every other month. You don't get it, you didn't get it every month like you do now. Um, and what they would do is for one month, they would do nothing but read. Eight hours a day, reading meters. And they would be able to finally read everything in one month. The next month, they would do all the maintenance that they needed to do. So, you know, if they needed to change out meters because they weren't working or whatever, that got done afterwards. Well, back in two thousand and six, the city decided to go to the electronic read, but I'll get into that in a second. Um, so if we go out there, we get a manual read, we turn it into, uh, water billing. If there's some that we don't get to, it, your meter, your water bill's got to be estimated. You hear that a lot too, it's estimated. We don't physically estimate that, if I'm right, Lamar and pride.
Exactly.
It's done by the computer. The computer looks at your, your averages over like the last so many years and goes, this is an average usage, and that's what you get billed for. That's not a, a physical human going in there and changing the numbers. That's automatic. Um, so when we do the, uh, when we do the check reads, of course, we turn it into the billing office, they enter it in. Uh, one thing you have to remember when we're doing that is a lot of these, because they're radio read, and it doesn't require somebody to go out there and physically look at it every single month. It could be fifteen years, fifteen years ago, the last time somebody looked at this. And people would say, how'd you read it? Well, we drove by, and it, it beeped with the radio. So you can imagine what's going on in the last fifteen years. Uh, many of these meters are buried. Uh, you know, people brought in sand, they're this deep below the ground. And it can literally take three or four of my guys out there half a day to find one meter. Um, there'll be old notes that, you know, it was by a shed, but that shed's not there anymore. It got blown away in one of the hurricanes, and they brought in sand. So it's a task to get caught up, to get all these read, get them found, get them exposed where we can see them and get to them. Um, but that's another reason why it helps having more people to be able to help with that. Um, let's see. Then, uh, another big problem is, you know, the residents got used to having no meter readers going in their yard. Even entry, you don't do that anymore. Um, so it's kind of, uh, been a contentious issue. Uh, of course, there's a lot of locked gates. Uh, we've had people sic their dogs on the guys, chase them down. We had one get bit. Um, we've also had many, many employees threatened because we're going in their yard trying to meet, read their meter. We've had to call the police numerous times just to escort us so we can read the meter. So these are some of the issues that we're running into. Uh, so what we're doing is we're swapping registers as we can. And what I mean by as we can is as they come in. Uh, we've, right now, there are seven hundred and sixty-eight of them that's on back order. And, uh, two hundred, two hundred of them are from, uh, last fiscal year. They were ordered September the eighth, and they're still not here. Um, placed another order that was a warranty issue order for six hundred, I mean, uh, yeah, five hundred and sixty-eight of them. And those, I don't know when we'll get them. They won't give me a time anymore. They're kind of saying five to six months, but we'll see. So I don't know. Um, and each month, we lose about thirty-three registers with the batteries dying. So as we're putting new ones out, we lose thirty-three a month that are, that are dying. Um, but if we had two thousand five hundred and something of them, we would get them installed probably two months and be done with all that part, but we would still be losing another thirty-three, another thirty-three every month. Um, and right now, we have put everything we can out that we have in stock. We have ninety of them still in stock, but we have to keep those for emergencies uh, and for new construction, because those have to have a meter. And because I don't have a date on when we get the other ones, I don't want to get too low on them. Uh, so one of the big questions is, how did we get to this point where so many aren't transmitting? Um, the first thing you gotta remember is Groves always struggle with money. It has forever. It's just part of what we've done since the fifties. Um, and in two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, the city decided, hey, we need to try to cut staff. So we're gonna do that by getting electronic meters. One person can drive by and read them. So they put all these out in one year at the same time. So they're all dying at the same time, which is a bad plan, but hey, we're gonna do it. Um, so they started dying really bad about twenty twenty, and everybody knows what happened in twenty twenty. Kind of the world changed with the pandemic, supply chain issues. So now more are dying than we can get in, so the problem's kind of compounding on itself. So, uh, let's see, we got right now about seven thousand meters in the city. And if we had the money, we want to change them all out, it'd be like one point eight million dollars to change them all out. And obviously, maybe we ain't got one point eight million dollars sitting, sitting around. Uh, and then it's just, there's a slow, a slow slope coming in. But the plans right now on what we're doing to fix this is really, it kind of started in November. Um, just, I think, Facebook, just seeing what's going on. We're actually reading your, your meter. Like I said, it might have been estimated for a really long time, uh, and now it's not. You might have got used to paying a minimum bill, which was two thousand gallons, and you're actually using five thousand gallons now because, you know, kid moved back home or whatever, you know, changes happened over the last two or three years. So we're reading it, and your actual bill may be a little bit higher. Um, if it was estimated too low for a long time, there, there's like a catch-up bill for this one time because you use more than we had estimated or than the computer estimated. Um, as registers come in, we're replacing them as fast as we can. Uh, we got two hundred of them in a month ago, and I mean, we put them all out, and now we're just waiting for more. Um, and also, uh, I'm looking into some sort of phased approach. Maybe we can span this out, something to try for, uh, when we get to the next fiscal year budget, when we start working on that. Want to have some kind of idea. Um, I've contacted Neptune, who is the manufacturer of all this, to try to give me some data, see if there's grants or loans or whatever, I don't know. Just some kind of options to bring to you guys. Because, uh, truthfully, this is the cash register of the city. This is, you know, this is how we making money, and it's got to be read. And right now, we just about got everything where we can get to it and get it physically read. So, I mean, we'll just manually read it for now as long as we can. Uh, does anybody have any questions?
How often is the check reads done physically now as far as these people, as far as the employees going out checking?
Three times a month. So we did, uh, actual reads today, where we rode around and it picked all the signals up. And it's probably in my email, I should probably already sent the list over. And tomorrow, my guys will start working on the check reads.
Is there a manual read that's going on now as well?
That after each zone, yes, there's manual read every time. That's what the check, we call it check reads, but that's manual read.
But that's not him driving around. That's him looking at the meter?
Yes, he, he did the driving around today, and then tomorrow, we'll be starting the manual reads. Oh, what didn't pick up with the signal.
How many people you have doing manual reads?
Depending on how many there are and what else we have going on. Uh, sometimes I'll have eight, sometimes nine, sometimes one. Just depends on, you know, if there's other things happening. There's always at least one, so.
What do people do, and this may be a Lamar question, what do people do if they found that their water meter is extremely high from what it used to be?
Yeah.
Can they approach the city about that to see if there's, uh, like you said?
I highly encourage them to do that, but we have worked with many, many customers to adjust their bill accordingly so no one's getting hit with huge bills on these estimates.
So the citizens are able to come in and physically talk to somebody here?
Yes, sir.
To see what?
Call or wherever it's convenient, some email correspondence as well, yes, sir.
And how are we getting that message out to the people that they can come in?
Put it on Facebook.
Yes, we can do that.
Making a, uh, making a post on our Facebook.
We did, we do have the Facebook post that kind of.
I read that.
Um, but we do have it on the website as well. Uh, we do have the information on the website as well.
Okay, so you're telling me, let me get this straight, okay? Because my bill's one of those that went up. Okay, so from, and this is just, uh, from me paying online. I didn't do an exact analysis. I keep all of my water bills. I'm one of those people, keep them all. But I went online, uh, looking at what I had paid, and from March of twenty-two through October of twenty-two, I paid fifty-six thirty-two. Now, it's just me there, basically. Um, and I don't use a lot of water other than the normal things you would use them for. And then from November through January, it went up fifty-seven, fifty-seven thirty-one. So you're telling me that's not an exact amount, that's an estimate?
Uh, we'd have to look at your account to, to be able to answer that question. I might, don't have.
So then the bill came in, and it was a hundred and sixty-three dollars and forty-five cents.
That sounds like a true up to me, is my guess. Or what, a true up is what I'm calling, the actual read. The actual read, someone actually went out, put eyes on it, took the number. And it's just whatever the estimated number was versus what the actual number was is the billing amount for that difference that she's describing.
Okay, so I went online, uh, to go look up my payments that I had made, you know, throughout the twenty-two and then into twenty twenty-three, and it was adjusted to a hundred and twenty-three forty-three. So they took forty dollars off. I don't know why, there was no explanation.
Okay.
Okay, so then now my bill is a hundred and twenty-three forty-three this month. So, you know, I'm able to pay that. It's not, it's, it's okay. It's basically mixed in with the other bills, okay? But there are people that can't. So how much, you may not know this, but how much are we talking about that the people of this city are being charged overage? It's, it's an over, it's an over, overbill is what it is, so.
Okay.
If there is a specific amount on a total.
Okay.
That all the people are being billed, overbilled, I would like to know that amount.
They shouldn't be being overbilled, but if there's questions, I'll be happy to look at everybody's account.
Yeah, but see, people were looking at it as overbill. I mean, when I looked at it, I went, what? Because.
I mean, we're pulling the number from the meter. It's what went through the meter, and that's what they're being billed for.
I understand that. I do, I understand that.
But to answer your question for this true up or overbilling or whatever you, however it's described, what I've instructed, talked to the public, what I've told them is, pay a little bit more than your bill, and, you know, three to four to five months.
Right.
Pay it down.
Well, that's, I, I have.
But we're not gonna penalize or turn people off, or we shouldn't be.
That's what I had, suggestions I was thinking about is, um, because I wanted to know how much it was altogether. Um, uh, and if the city could absolve, um, absolve that, if they could, you know, the city could say, we'll pay the overage because we didn't, uh, read it or didn't read correctly. Or we could have that overage amount with them, or they could make payments on the overage along with their regular bill, so that it's not taxing on your budget.
Well, that, depending on how.
Because a lot of this.
That's occurring in, in a minor way as it is, depending on how extreme their bill is. We're not trying to bill anybody more than two hundred, two hundred and fifty bucks a month on this true up. If it's higher than that, we usually just write that off.
Well, if your bill's like mine, fifty-seven thirty-one or fifty-six thirty-two, and then I've got the bill, that's a hundred and seven dollars more than what I normally would pay. So if I'm just, you know, not on city council, and I'm sitting out there going, what am I supposed to do? Because my budget says I can only pay, you know, tops sixty dollars.
Sure.
So they could make a range, just say, pay ten dollars a month on it until it's paid off?
Indeed, I, I don't even get that specific. I say, just pay a little bit more than what your bill is, your regular bill is for that month. So say your regular bill is sixty or seventy bucks or whatever, maybe, pay eighty, ninety, a hundred or whatever, and over time, that'll get paid off.
There, if I may, I've witnessed this, oh, since I've been in here. Lamar and the people, the ladies in the water officer, very, uh, eager to work with people as long as they know about these issues. Somebody comes in and tells them, you know, they're having some issues, they're glad to work with them. It's just, um, they can't work with them if they don't know about them. And that's one of the issues that we're having, is a lot of people aren't, aren't talking to them about it as well. So, um, and if some, today, Lamar had a guy that was, had a problem with his, uh, meter, and they did a check read on him. When they did the check read, it went down, and he, he made the credit for him. So, I mean, it, if we know about it, we can make, we can do something about it.
Well, someone was out at my house a week or week and a half ago, something like that, looking at the meter. I had told my son to dig it out because I wanted to be able to turn the water off if I needed to during the freeze. And he said someone from the city had come by and was looking at it. So I'm sorry we didn't do it, and they had to, but, um, just kind of happened.
We kind of prefer that, actually. We don't want to damage the meter.
So with, with this, I guess, issue we have with the batteries, this is gonna be an ongoing issue that the city's gonna deal with.
It's an ongoing issue.
I think that needs to be, let the public know that this isn't going away.
It, it's, it's everywhere, everywhere. Um, we just happen to advertise our problem.
Oh, you mean in other cities? It's happening in other city sources?
Yes, yes.
Is it the same company that?
Uh, this is probably one of the most popular ones around this area, this brand, but they're, it's all the same thing. It's the same everywhere. Uh, we, we try to borrow parts from each other, you know, um, and they're having the same issue.
They don't have extra batteries?
No, you can't actually change them. Like the new one.
The part, yeah.
Then there, all these pieces, one of the problems we used to always have, and we still do these old ones, is you have all these wires everywhere, and then you also have an antenna. So you got all these wires everywhere, and they would get hit by long.
So that, that gray box right there is what you're replacing?
The batteries inside this.
That's what you're referring to, is the long antenna?
Yeah, so now, all of that is gone, and this is the new ones.
Okay.
No wires.
Is there, is there a, a, uh, program being looked at to implement that this doesn't happen again? Because you're changing our batteries now, we know in fifteen years.
Correct. That, uh, that's what I'm.
Are, are we documenting?
I want to do a phased.
When they've been changed?
A phased approach. Uh, what we're concentrating on right now is, uh, we have three zones on zone three. That's what we're really kind of concentrating on. That way, we change out zone three. That's all good. And then if a year or two from now, we start working on zone one, you know, it'd be a year, it'll spread out. That's the ideal way to do this, not keep it all in one.
Okay.
So my bill of fifty-seven thirty-one or fifty-six thirty-two is not a true bill, and it will not be billed that way every month? Am I gonna have a bill for a hundred and twenty-three dollars every month?
Well, a lot of it depends on you, but no, you shouldn't. That one, that large, one large bill.
Washing machine, showers, that's about it.
Again, without, I'm, I'm assuming that the one large bill you got was a true up when someone actually went and put eyes on it. If you got a second one for that larger amount, I'd have to look at it, but my guess is that's gonna be an estimated amount. I, I don't know without looking.
A month.
Well, for the second month, if you got two one hundred dollar bills in a month, is that what you're describing?
No, no, I'm saying, no, I'm sorry. Let me revise it. Okay, I'm used to paying fifty-six, fifty-seven dollars a month.
Sure.
The bill, the one I just got's a hundred and twenty, twenty-three dollars and forty-three cents. And I'd you expect a hundred and twenty-three dollars and forty-three, forty-three cents every month?
No, no, that would be a catch-up or a true up.
Because we need to talk.
Feel free, I'll, I'll be your data mom.
Sorry, it's kind of big.
Not a problem. But no, I would expect it to be, that's a one-time catch-up bill, to true up what you have used over the period of time that it was estimated. In the next month, it'll be what your actual consumption was.
Okay, so it's not gonna be estimated, uh, next month?
Going forward, it should be.
We're trying not to estimate at all.
Yeah, that's the goal.
At all, yeah, we're trying to actually physically read every one, but there are still many that we haven't uncovered yet, because like I said, it's been fifteen years. So it kind of slows us down a little bit on some of the zones, but we're trying to get to where every month, everything has eyes put on it, or it reads with the radio, one or the other.
But it goes by gallons, it goes by how much.
Correct.
Water you actually use.
Yes, yes. And on the, the reverse of this, there are many people that we had estimated too high. And so they have a credit. Of course, nobody's gonna complain about that.
Haven't heard about that one.
Yeah, there's a lot like that, too. It works both ways, because you might have life changes, you know? Kid moved out, moved on, so now you have less people in your house, so you're using less water now. We've been estimating, you having four people there, and now there's only two, so.
And, and during the recent years, we've also had two significant.
And, and during the recent years, we've also had two significant freezes, which some people didn't turn off their waters and, and when they did get a true-up bill, well, they were probably spewing ten thousand gallons from flooded houses or broken pipes. And so when their true-up bill does come in, it, it shows a significant usage for, you know, whatever.
Indeed, yes.
Uh, the, the one we had looked at was unfortunately had been estimated for twenty-eight months. And also was flooded during the freeze. Uh, so their true-up bill was for almost fifteen thousand gallons.
Oh, yeah.
Except they were paying a minimum bill, so he, Lamar fixed it. They were able to speak with Lamar, got it fixed. Uh, they still had to pay for water they used, uh, but no one was overbilled. They paid for the number that went through the meter. Unfortunately, part of their water that went through the meter was just spewing into the house and not actually being used. And I'm, I'm sure that if people had issues like that, they, they could probably come and talk to you about it, but.
We have a whole different policy for leaks, absolutely.
Yeah, so, but go ahead. I'm sorry, I'll go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say, at this point, if anyone has concerns that they've been wrongfully overbilled, they can talk to you. Uh, but the short story is, they're being charged for the actual number on the meter.
Correct.
Okay.
So people should check their bills and check the gallons that they use and that will tell a story.
Yes.
And if their normal bill was sixty bucks and based on three thousand gallons, but they started using five thousand gallons, their bill's gonna be higher, even with the make.
Their, their monthly bill is gonna be higher going forward, just because they're using more than they used to.
Yeah.
How, how long, I guess, since this started, uh, when did y'all notice that, okay, we're having uh significant?
June, July?
We started working on the problem in two thousand nineteen, but it got it grew exponentially starting around two thousand twenty, cause then we saw the real spike in the.
So in nineteen, we, we had an idea that we're.
Yeah, we, we knew when they were installed, and so we were kinda figuring, okay, fifteen years later, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, we need to start getting ready and it ramped up. We just kinda ran into a COVID issue.
The, the summer of two thousand twenty, it like, that, that's when they started dying faster than you could get them in. And it's just, that's the problem now, you know.
So technology, technology hasn't been our, our friend on this.
It's, it's the chips, which the cars, I heard somebody talking about the cars here. It's the same thing, I mean. But it's not just that brass. Brass now would just, uh, Friday, they said eleven months to get anything brass in. You order it today, you won't get it by Christmas. It'll be January next year.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Michael, but Mr. Albert, we've replaced forty-five hundred registers of seven thousand already, correct, Mike?
Over, over what period?
Oh, since we started.
No, no, that's how many that are working, forty-five hundred.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. Okay, okay, so, but we already have.
Since, since November on our planned schedule of replacement, we've done two hundred and eighty, actually two hundred and eighty exactly.
But since two thousand nineteen.
And I don't know.
I'd say probably a little over three thousand, three, thirty-five hundred in that range.
Yeah. We've got approximately twenty-three hundred that are not transmitted.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, we just didn't read today. I think it was four hundred and eight on that zone. Uh, didn't read, so it was actually pretty good after.
So the gentleman that came out and, and I'm guessing he read my meter when he dug everything I did. Is he gonna have to come out every month and do that at my house?
Yes. Yeah, but once they dig it up, you, you can kinda see it and you can get to it, cause nobody's probably dug it up in ages, you know?
Uh, about two years.
Yeah, and some of them that had, had no problems, nobody moved in or out, if it's the same people living there. It's fifteen years since somebody's looked at that meter, cause nobody's needed to. There's been no problems. And so now we gotta go find it. So that, that takes time. But yes, they'll be out there every day, every month to read the meters, uh, until all this gets fixed.
Okay, so there's seven thousand meters roughly in the city? And we're looking at maybe, uh, in, in a year's time, may replace, uh, two hundred?
Uh, we're budgeted, we can do.
No, what we can get part, I mean, what, if, if you used what we've already done.
Everything will come in that's on order at seven hundred and sixty-eight more that will change out. So, I mean, we can order about five hundred and fifty or so.
That's what we have budgeted regularly, a hundred and fifty thousand.
A year?
A year.
So let's say you, you change five hundred a year. We're gonna be here a while.
Cause they, they, yeah, right, cause more batteries are dying. It's a continuous process. It really is. It's, it's not a, there's not an end date for it.
Full disclosure, if these all do show up there in this budget year, we're gonna bust budget on that line item, because some of these were ordered last year.
Are most of the meters in the front yard? There should be in the front yard, huh?
No, uh, it's probably about half and half, I guess, really. It's, depending on what they. Yeah, depending on what neighborhood you're in. Some of them have alleys.
You have back.
So the water.
If you have a back easement, they're usually in the back.
Yeah, usually. It, it's, it's probably half and half in the city. Uh, and what we're doing, we're trying to focus on changing backyards out, cause they're harder to get to, they take longer. So we change the backyards, change the ones that people have locked gates, they have dogs, we gotta schedule to get the dogs. We wanna change those out, so we don't have to do all that again at that, you know, and leave the front yards for last, cause those are easy to get to.
Could y'all give council a, seeing where we're at with this? And you were saying y'all are looking at some type of, of uh game plan to be able to, uh, maintenance program, if you wanna call it. Can you put something in writing and, and kind of lay it out over the next, let's just say, five years, what you're doing? I think this will be something that the, uh, the people of the city can understand. This is a big deal.
That, oh, very big.
And, and you've got a, a plan for it.
Yep.
And it's gonna take this long and.
That was my plan.
If you end up getting an opportunity to buy more than you're gonna do that, so it would speed it up. But at least, we've got a, a, a plan in place. And as we're looking at it taking this long with current, uh, delivery dates on what's been ordered. And at least it'll let the public know that we've got a plan and, and this is where we're at.
Definitely, that, that was my plan.
A lot of their questions on, okay, this is gonna be over next, you know, next month.
It, uh, that was the original plans. Why I met with Neptune back in January was to get all this in place for when we got the budget time to do all that, but Facebook kinda threw it out of, out of order, I guess, but yes, that, that's the plan, to get something together, cause we need numbers, we need enough cost, how much we gotta put aside each year to, to.
How soon could y'all do that?
Have to get back with Neptune, um, probably a couple of weeks.
Okay. Okay, I would appreciate that.
Okay.
So y'all knew, you knew, well, I know you've only been in the position for four months, but previous to that, whoever was knew that it would, the water bill would have to be estimated? Did they know that or did you, I mean?
They're, uh, they're always estimated.
Yeah, there's always gonna be time for something to get read.
Yeah.
But not to this magnitude. That's what we were trying to get ahead of the curve, but unfortunately we ran into supply issues. But we didn't also know that, you know, the supply issues would be anywhere near this bad, cause kind of scale in, scale out was the concept, but.
Well, considering, let's just say, considering that people that are not past due two months or so past due with their bill, and they have this extra amount they have to pay. As you said, you're not going to cut them off as long as their bill, like the bill was.
As long as they're making payments and the balance is going down, absolutely not.
Okay.
But if they make no payments for two or three months, I mean, that's how everybody else is gonna be.
Oh, that's just the regular route.
Correct.
What is that unit with the battery and it costs?
Uh, well, they're like this now. They're, I just wanted to show y'all what's out there dying.
They don't.
Yeah, they don't make those anymore. Um, this is right at two hundred and sixty dollars for this. And then the, the base is.
But that doesn't have to be changed every time, the base?
The problem with not change, we, we are not changing them right now, just because you can't get these. But what happens with these is they slow down. So, uh, over time, people get freed water. Not gonna complain about that.
So what's the life expectancy of that?
Fifteen to twenty years.
Okay, so both components then, cause it looks like that? What, what is that?
Uh, about three hundred and forty, three fifty, somewhere in there.
And when we have returns or, or when we get credit, we'll get it for more or less half price. You know, when we pull them and we can return to the manufacturer, they'll give us credit for it, so we absolutely try to capitalize on that, you know, most paying for a buck.
So they, they do give you.
They have a twenty-year warranty, uh, but then after ten years, they're prorated. So there's dates on the serial numbers and you have to send them all back there. They review them all, make sure it wasn't, uh, damaged caused by someone. And if it's under warranty, you get credit for your next order. So instead of two hundred and sixty dollars for one, we made, like one of the orders we just placed, I think they were like a hundred and sixty dollars. You got like a hundred dollars off.
So based on how many you, you return, what's the return rate for, for what you're able to recoup off of that? Is it half of them? Eighty percent?
Yes, eighty percent, seventy-five, eighty percent, probably a good number.
Probably so.
But it takes a while for them to process that return, is the flat, the flip side. You know, today we can order it, hopefully in six to eight months, they'll be here. With that return, you're gonna be waiting three to four months just to get the credit. Then you're allowed to place your order.
Yeah.
One of those balancing acts.
The, the order I placed in December for this, what are it, six hundred something, uh, I think that was sent in in July for those warranty. So it, everything's just slow now. It's real slow.
Well, thank you for your time today.
Thank y'all for listening.
And I like to show and tell.
That's what I call it too.
Hopefully that shed some light on all of y'all, what's going on.
If y'all have more questions, call, uh, we'd be happy to talk to you about it.
Any other reports?
Uh, no, sir.
Any citizen comments? Have any citizen comments? All right, item eight, uh, discuss and take vote on selecting an executive search firm to hire the city manager. I'll need a motion.
I'll make a motion, we discuss and take vote on selecting an executive search firm to hire city manager.
A second.
I have a motion and a second to discuss and take a vote on selecting an executive search firm to hire the city manager. Do we have any questions? Uh, at this point, I'm assuming everybody's kinda looked over the proposals and kinda made up their decisions. I think if everybody wants to maybe pick their top two and explain it and we'll compare and then we'll decide on which one to pick. Anybody wanna go first?
I'll go first.
All right.
Uh, we only had one company that actually, uh, we interviewed in person. That was Baker Tilly. I personally like that company. Uh, if you looked at their handout, they actually went through our city, took pictures. Where they did a little research on, uh, our town before they did their proposal. And the second one that I would pick would be Salvin. Uh, can't really tell you why. I just like, I liked the feeling I got from the interview. Slaven. That's my two picks.
That was exactly my two picks as well. I'd looked at one real hard and it was Slaven.
Kept the last one, wouldn't it?
He was the one. I was impressed with the way they, they worked. I don't know, it seemed like they, they worked together, the way they discussed things. Just a little more, uh, continuity there between those two guys.
Well, on Salvin, uh, Mr. Krings, if you look on the puzzle page seven. Um, you know, his, his, um, the information about him is extremely impressive. And I went through all of these, uh, a lot. And thought about different, different avenues with them. I liked, um, I liked SGR. I like the way their, um, their proposal was, their cost is broken down. It's on page thirty-six, tab ten, their cost is broken down. They've got their schedule broken down, their agreement. They have a newsletter that's about forty-five thousand people they reach. And their cost is twenty-four thousand nine hundred. Let's see, but page thirty-six, I think is the cost, if I'm not mistaken. Yeah, and then page forty-four, uh, then they've got their scope of services and they've got page forty-four is, um, well, page forty-one breaks down that twenty-four thousand nine hundred. That's why, one thing I looked at is who breaks down their the amount they're gonna charge us, so we know what we're paying for, we know what we're, what we're gonna get. All of them bill basically the same, one-third, one-third, one-third at different stages and basically they're basic, the same stages really. Um, let's see what else. The Slaven, Slaven, is it Slaven?
I think so.
Slaven.
Okay, I looked at them, I looked at them really, really hard. Um, I think they have an impeccable background. Their expenses are capped. He was very specific when I asked him, when I asked him about the cost, he was very specific about it. And they do the one-third, one-third, one-third. They do geographical references, preferences. Um, they do talk about, uh, relocation expenses for, uh, someone if we pick a, a specific person. And all of them, we're gonna be paying for travel expenses for a candidate. They're basically all the same on that. I think it basically, I, I think really it kinda comes down to, you know, personality. It didn't matter to me whether they showed up in person or not, as Mr. Vinsel spoke about, um, Councilman Vinsel spoke about. Because most business nowadays, a, a lot of it is done on Zoom and meetings like that. And that's just because, uh, you know, the virus changed the way we do things. But if you're looking at, if you're looking at cost, Slaven is, um, less than the rest of them. But I did like, there's a lot I did like about them. Uh, and I did like Mr. Krings, Krings. I did like him and I liked, um, his background, very impressive in his background. So they're all very, basically the same. And they do have capped expenses and that kinda thing. So I, I, I just looked at all of them really hard and kind of made a chart. Now, when they, when they're going to advertise, cause I looked at advertising, some of that, some of it was not quite answered. But when they talk about ICMA, I went to their website, ICMA, and they have a hundred and five thousand, one hundred and five thousand monthly visitors. I think they have a, from what I've read, it said currently they have, currently they have over thirteen thousand members, and all of them are going to advertise with that organization. And that organization, uh, they charge members, I think that, like for something, we're looking for, it is twelve thousand dollars or twelve hundred dollars. Is one of the fees they char, charge their members. So they do, they will pay to advertise in that, but it is going to reach a lot of people. So I think, but it just kinda comes down to what you really like. I like Slaven and I like, um, the SGR. Uh, their layout is really intense and, and good to my taste.
I'm gonna go again real quick and say the reasons. Uh, I like Slaven as well. I think that, uh, what they presented came out very well. Uh, Becker Tilly to me was really a one to me. Uh, I like the idea of Becker Tilly, that they, they know about our community, they know more about our community, I think, than, uh, Slaven probably did. Probably more than anybody did. They, they've got experience in Beaumont and in Crawford. And I just think they did their homework better as far as. what we're really looking for and, and the ways of, uh, getting somebody to expand our business here in the chemical area. I mean, you know, trying to get businesses in here in the city.
Well, Slaven, um, did talk about how much research they did on our city. They were online to do a lot of research on our city. So I appreciated that. And then, I know that's kind of hard for these companies, um, if they don't know the community or know the city. Uh, and they're not, they can't, you know, they're not within ten, twenty, thirty, a hundred miles and can't drive in. So they do a lot of their research online. And of course, they would go to the city website and go from there into all the different aspects.
I think one of the concerns was that, uh, Texas and looking at their client list, there's like, uh, ten different Texas clients that they, that they, uh, this is, this is the, uh, Slaven. Uh, so they've got exposure here, uh, in Texas, I guess, uh.
Also, Slaven said that they did not put all of their, um, all of their clients from Texas in their book. They didn't, their proposal, they didn't put all of them, uh. I went back and I listened to, I, you know, taped the workshops and I listened to what they had to say. And, uh, Slaven did say, um, that they had a lot more in Texas, they just didn't put them all in their proposal.
Uh, I had pretty much narrowed it down to the, to two also. Uh, I had, uh, looked at Baker Tilly because of their experience with Beaumont, Port Arthur and this area. I also liked the fact that they're based out of Plano and we have one point of contact, Mr. Edward. And, uh, of course, Slaven was my second. Uh, they're, they're, they're pretty even, uh, geographically. I, I prefer the Baker Tilly being here. Uh, felt they both looked into the city. Uh, I gave the lead to Baker Tilly mainly because they've worked in our general area. They know some of our economical and geographical, uh, obstacles that we have here. And, and the fact that, you know, they're, they are located a little closer. Uh, it's not a plane ride, it's a car ride when they come here. I did also like that Baker Tilly had the, uh, the video interviews that they were going to give us and also the questionnaire that we get to flip, flip through. So, uh, I narrowed it down to Baker Tilly and Slaven, uh, with Baker Tilly having a slight lead over Slaven as well. Or in my opinion, so.
Well, I think all of them are going to do interviews and give us interviews and do, uh, some kind of a survey.
I also like Baker Tilly, I'm not prepared to say this a while ago, but they offer different services if we ever needed it in the future. I mean, they have a lot of different, different services, I'm sure they would charge for them obviously. A lot of different services.
Yeah, I think all of them had different services. Going through the, their proposals and looking at different things they brought up.
Hey, what does Mary want to vote on, one at a time and discuss?
Well, you made the motion, if you want to change it to, I mean, we could still discuss it, uh.
I don't want what Port Arthur has and Beaumont has. I want something specific for Groves. I don't want to turn Groves into Port Arthur or Beaumont. I want it to stay Groves and I want the person that we get not to have, how do I put it? Not to have a mentality that those places would have. We need Groves to stay Groves. And we need somebody that would be a city manager that would have that outlook for Groves. Not a Port Arthur outlook, not a Beaumont outlook, an outlook for us.
I think you're talking in terms of a small town, mentality, I guess, uh, versus Beaumont being quite, uh, larger than Groves, uh, as well as Port Arthur, so.
Well, they're just providing candidates, we're going to pick them and we can interview them as long as we need to.
Right.
Well, I just think that Slaven, the, the experience with Slaven is very impressive, man knows what he's doing in government. And I'm talking about Mr. Krings. That was Bob, somebody. Bob Slaven, is it?
Yeah, Robert E. Slaven.
Robert Slaven.
Change my motion and pick who I want, that we just vote yes or no on each one of them?
That's, that is a-
Suggestion.
And we'll, we'll have discussing on each one too, so.
If there's no more discussion, I'll make my motion. Anybody else have anything else they want to?
Well, again, once you, if you change the motion, there could still be a discussion on, on the amendment.
If there's no more discussion on this motion, I'm going to make a motion that we hire Baker Tilly as our search firm.
It'll need a second.
I'll say.
Have a, an amendment to the emotion to hire Baker Tilly as the search firm. Have a motion and a second for the amendment on the question.
I think they were a little bit too touchy feely for me, they always, it was more of a, you know, how do you feel about this and let's do, let's have these surveys and let's do this and let's do that. Instead of just focusing mainly on, we want a certain person in here for us, it was more, I don't know what the word for it would be, just touchy feely, just let's find out how you feel about this. Well, what I think is a different thing than what I feel. So, I don't know, I didn't really care for that. Mister, uh, the, the Slaven company was very direct, more direct than let's get to the point. And I know on Baker, uh, Baker Tilly, I was looking at their amount. They're more than, they're more than Slaven, they're like two thousand and seven hundred dollars more than Slaven. On page twenty-six. Page twenty-six, they have their total all-inclusive fee, let them break it down. Um, I mean, I know they've got the fee structure, it's a third, third, third. But like I said, that price is two thousand seven hundred dollars and more. Or let's be paying for travel expenses for a candidate. Um, I don't know, I just think some things were not there. Some information just wasn't there. As far as money goes. Did anybody else find anything different on, at looking at their financial recommendations here? Because I found twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-seven is what I looked at.
Paul, you didn't mention them, did you? Is there something specific that kept their name out of your mouth in your, in your research?
Slaven, you're talking about?
No, Baker Tilly, the motion is for Baker Tilly.
I just wasn't, wasn't impressed, I guess, as much as I was with the, the way Slaven, how they, uh, those two guys just work together, it seemed like, and, uh, so I'm, definitely, uh, I, I guess, set on, on Slaven.
Do y'all have anything to add?
So what is this on Baker Tilly where it says, Baker Tilly may consider professional fee reduction ten percent if the city of Groves is providing additional recruitments during the subsequent one-month period? That, that's on page twenty-six.
Yeah, so my understanding of that would be if you were to use them for another position within the city, then it would give you a discount.
But see, still, that twenty-six thousand nine hundred fifty, they don't have a breakdown of that money. And they're not, as far as advertising goes, because I looked a lot at advertising. I don't see where they can do anything any different. So to, to charge more but not do anything different than someone that we would pay less for, it doesn't make sense to me. I don't know, but they don't have anything in here, or I couldn't find some things that clicked that would say, um, these would be additional expenses, everyone had that, they all had it. But I don't know, maybe I just didn't see it. So you're looking at a company, you're going to pay two thousand seven hundred dollars more, plus the expenses, travel for a candidate. Plus, I, I, I don't know if there would be anything else. And I'm kind of, when someone says it's all-inclusive, then I want you to give me a list of what's included. Stephanie, would you know anything about that? Because I know you've read these and looked at them.
If I went back to my notes, I was different, I have anything about that.
I've looked through my notes for that particular, um, thirty-minute session. Mr. Monk, if they come back and say, we're, we're going to have to charge extra for blah, 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 can we look at and say, uh, no, they're not because?
Well, so this particular vendor did not include their contract. So I think there's a review stage there where you want to see their contract. Some of the vendors did include their proposed contract, but not all did.
Yeah.
And this one did not. Um, my understanding of the presentation is that that wasn't all-inclusive figure for that particular vendor, but that would be in the detail of the agreement. Because I, I, you know, I think there is some language that may leave it open. But it specifically says all-inclusive, so that'd be an argument I'd make off the brochure package if I had to.
Okay. Because if they come back and they say, we're going to advertise over here for this position, but it's going to cost you extra, blah, blah, blah. I don't want to pay it because you said inclusive.
Sure, I think that'd be your position and I think you'd want to make sure that you didn't sign, have the contract, contract executed until we had it reviewed for that language.
So move with any of them?
Correct.
When you look at when their FERD is billed, Baker Tilly for installments, thirty percent, thirty percent, phase one, thirty percent, phase two, and then ten percent on acceptance of an employment offer. So if, what I'm concerned about is, if we get involved with this and pay more for it, um, and we're in the process of starting to deal with them and we don't want to continue, would there be any kind of, um, fee or whatever, you know, whatever word they would consider it?
Well, I think you ordinarily not make the offer, uh, until you've gotten to that point. So you, I don't think you'd run into a billing issue, you just don't make the offer to the candidate until you've gotten to a point-
I'm talking about the company.
Oh, the company itself?
Yes. Because I want to see that contract, I would want to see, you know, a contract between them before-
So I think what you could do is you could authorize moving forward with contract negotiations. Um, and, and so along those lines, you could say, we'll move forward pending review of the contract.
That might be a good idea for all of them.
Well, we, yeah.
The point is, we're going to have to review the contract anyway. I think that contract would have to go before council again anyway, right?
The SGR company had their contract in there.
One did, right.
The other two have, uh, gave us their, their contract.
I think one did, but I don't think that-
No, SGR had contract in there.
SGR, I do remember specifically, but I didn't remember seeing any statements, I missed that, I apologize.
Well, Slaven has, in the back, they have a, an invoice, client list. How these they deal with. It might be, I don't know, it might be unusual for them to, for these kind of companies to put a sample contract in there. But I did like that SGR had one in there, I could read what was, you know, expected of us, that kind of thing. I don't want to get stuck with something that we're not happy with. Do we have to vote on this today? Can we vote on the, on the twenty-seven, it's next Monday, isn't it?
There's nothing that requires voting on it, but there would need to be a motion made, I think, to table it, if we were going to do that.
And in the meantime, could we perhaps give a sample contract of something they would expect of us? Couldn't that be possible? I mean, if SGR can give us a sample contract, couldn't these other companies do it?
Ask for that.
And then if we have additional questions about monies we would owe them or something they were doing for us, we could ask in the meantime?
Sure.
And that would better define their, some of these calls that, that you're, yeah, question.
Yeah, because we could ask, you know, for Baker Tilly, give us a breakdown of that twenty-nine thousand five hundred. Give us a breakdown of the advertising you would choose.
Sure.
Because they're going to do Facebook and those kinds of things and, uh, there's one, TML is free.
So would we like to go ahead and get sample contracts from both Baker Tilly and Slaven?
Yes, I would say. I mean, what do y'all think?
I agree with that.
And look into their advertising, give us a list of where you would advertise. And if you're going to advertise in ICMA, how much is it going to cost? And is that additional on top? Because if Slaven's twenty-four thousand two forty-two and they break it down in their, they break it down in their packet, but I would like to know if there's any additional cost for any additional advertising and where they would advertise. Where's my page? Because remember I asked him about that? I don't know if y'all remember, it's fresh on my mind because I listened to it all today.
Miss Davis, I have your post, ICMA may have, uh, would not post anything without your approval for additional cost if it was any other- if it was any other advertisement outside of what was in, in listed in here that they would seek your approval.
And that's Baker Tilly, is it?
That was Baker Tilly, correct. So, but that was the only other thing I had about cost. On that, I'm just breaking it down by the different steps and phases and how that was included in it. The pages of it, so, yeah.
Slaven told us, Slaven told us that it's in their book. Um, the, what I call the basic fees, fifteen thousand six forty, and then the expense budget is eight thousand six oh two. And that came to the twenty-four thousand two forty-two. See, I'd like to know something like that from Baker Tilly. I just want to know everything I can before I vote.
I think it would probably be a good idea to look at both contracts to see how they're staging. Let you review them.
Yeah.
And then bring it to us. Good.
I think so.
And I think that's the proper due diligence that we should be, I mean.
That would be what date that we would?
The twenty-seventh is the next city council meeting, I think. Pretty sure. Am I right, Corson?
Yes, ma'am.
If there's any questions we have additional to that, we could email you and you could get in touch with them.
That would be great.
Miss Stephanie, whoever wants to, I don't know which, who does what.
They probably need to go through Stephanie. Contract questions can be answered by Mr. Monk.
I'll get them the contracts. Yeah, I'll talk to them after.
The communication between the recruitments probably needs to go through Stephanie.
Right. And I'll get the contracts taken and everything so you can answer those questions when we come in.
Great, thank you.
And then let us know. I mean, four at the twenty-seventh.
I'll circulate what everybody can get as soon as I can get it and then we'll discuss some more.
Yeah. I'm going to amend my motion again.
Can I say something?
Sure.
I'm sorry. I was just going to say that on page seventeen of Slaven, um, they say the expenses are capped in there. It's capped, so that's, that's one page you, you know, y'all might want to revisit. Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
They're, they're all going to bill us for anything outside of what they propose as their scope, so.
We need to know what those, that bill is, I mean, what those expenses are.
Any other discussion? I'm going to amend my motion to table the selection of the executive search firm until we can review the contracts from Baker Tilly and Slaven.
Two seconds. Oh, I did, okay. I second that.
Have a motion and a second to table? Any discussions? No discussions, vote on the motion. Mayor votes aye. Mayor pro, Tim McAdams?
Aye.
Councilmember Venzel?
Aye.
Councilmember Oliver?
Aye.
Councilmember Dugus?
Aye.
Motion's tabled. Uh, nine, city attorney, nothing for you. Ten, city manager, nothing for you. Eleven, councilman or comments?
Just other than we don't need to get in a hurry at this point. You know, we need to like, take our time and really think things through because I think it's so important. So I mean, if it takes another week to make a decision based on looking at the contracts, I'm good with that.
So once you enter into a contract, these people, you're in it.
Any other comments? No comments, well, we'll adjourn at six-thirty.